I'm sorry for interrupting, but I cannot hear.
All right. Can you hear me now? Excellent. All right. Council President McGurven.
Here.
All right, Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez. Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
And Councilmember Halloran.
Here.
Roll call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Councilmember Perez.
Oh, Councilmember Perez just showed up. All present, sir.
Okay, we're all present. Well, welcome, everybody. And it's been exactly two years and three months since we had a council meeting here live and in person. So tonight, we're going to start off with a proclamation for LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2022.
All right, proclamation. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall riots and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members. And whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas the city of Renton, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations. Whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, the pride flag will appear at Renton City Hall from June 6 through 12, 2022. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2022 to be LGBTQIA+ Month, Pride Month, in the city of Renton. And I encourage all residents to join me in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals in the city. And witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed the sixth day of June 2022, signed Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
Again. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Council President McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight, to accept the proclamation is Alex Shockey from Valley Medical Center.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I proudly and happily accept this proclamation for myself, the city, our schools, and Valley Medical Center. I did tell Mr. Mayor and Edvin Bailey briefly when I was waiting. I thought it was a city bill collector calling me when it said, "See you, Renton." It's not a bill, and this is very much, this is much better. I don't have anything profound to say other than I grew up in a town of 200 white people in Rideout, Illinois. It was a great farming town. Everyone knew me. Everyone knew my family. Everyone knew my story. But said that, though, even everyone knew me, I still felt like a fish out of water. In the 10 years I resided, volunteered, made exceptional friends and family here in Renton, the city of roughly 100,000 people, where I don't know everyone, I know many, but not everyone. And everyone knows me. I've never felt like a fish out of water here. I certainly am proud of where I grew up. I probably tell people I'm from Renton. I appreciate the city leaders for their work in celebrating our diverse LGBTQIA+ community and am looking forward to its future continued work in reducing barriers to equity and increasing inclusivity for all our residents. Happy Pride. Mom, Dad, if I love you and if you can see me, my brothers will help them. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we start with a public hearing for the battery energy supply system moratorium. And presenting is Katie Bucamorales.
Good evening. Oh, sorry.
You can stand there. That's how I usually sit.
My PowerPoint is loaded over here. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, members of council, and members of the public. My name is Katie Bucamorales, and I am a planner in the Community and Economic Development Department. I am joining you this evening for the public hearing for the adopted citywide moratorium associated with battery energy storage systems, or also known as ordinance 6061. The ordinance was adopted on April 18 of this year and became effective that same evening. Currently, battery energy storage systems is not an authorized or permitted use pursuant to the city's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations. The ordinance established a citywide moratorium on the acceptance of land use, building permit, and business license applications for that use battery energy storage systems. State law requires that a public hearing for the emergency ordinances be held within 60 days of adoption, and this meeting will satisfy that request. The ordinance will sunset on October 18 of this year unless lifted sooner by city council or extended pursuant to state law. As noted in the adopted ordinance, the city seeks adequate time to better understand any impacts and determine appropriate zoning and development standards for such systems. And that concludes my presentation. The next step is to accept public testimony this evening regarding ordinance 6061. And in the weeks that follow, staff will begin a work program to better understand the impacts and determine appropriate zoning and development standards, as noted in the ordinance. But the work program will follow the schedule here, provided a briefing to Planning Commission on July 6, a Planning Commission public hearing on July 20. And then Planning Commission will deliberate and make a recommendation, which will be considered by Planning and Development Committee on August 8.
All right, thank you. Does the council have any questions at this time? All right, we do have a few people signed up to testify tonight. And as I call your name, please head to the podium and give your name and city residence with a clerk. And first up is Nicola Robinson.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
How long do we have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, I've cut mine way down. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this public hearing. And it is the result of a pre-application that was submitted to the planning department for a battery energy storage system that was proposed behind our community, which is across from the Riverview Park and the Cedar River off the Maple Valley Road. So there was, we found out about this by chance when we saw drones doing aerial survey of the property. And that was in March, and there was such an outcry from us. And you heard us, which we really appreciate. And we also thank you for this moratorium. And our concern is that we, in looking into these systems, and we do support green energy, but we're hesitant regarding these systems, especially when they're so close to communities like ours. And this is proposed to within 50 feet, 9.3 acres, as you know. And you have all the information ad nauseam from us about this. And there are continued problems on record as recently as February and March of this year of software malfunctions and breakdowns, which I have sent you links to those. And that's as recently as this year, and these problems have been going on since 2019. There's been a surge of best installations, and regulations have not been able to keep up. The people who put these systems together have put in part some safety measures that, in part, in software programs that monitor the systems and also structural changes to the systems. But there are still problems. And most of these facilities are remote. I haven't seen any that are close to communities. And you're very familiar with the parcel that is behind our community. It's, this energy storage system is completely nonconforming to that. It's designated for the last 40 years, zoned as low-density single-family, one unit per 10 acres, and also designated as a rural designation resource conservation, apart from most sensitive and critical areas there. So we were horrified and very worried. And when we realized that this was a proposal, and we were very surprised and continue to be concerned because all the companies involved, the storage system, Puget Sound Energy, and the owner of the parcel should be well aware of the restrictions of this parcel. And yet, they still went ahead and put this pre-application in to the city. So I think I could probably just conclude. I don't know how much time I've got left.
We've got about one minute left.
Okay. So it's also nonconforming in the sense that it uses up 100% of the buildable area when only 35% is allowed. We ask that you refuse this pre-application from moving forward. We're optimistic that this proposal would be rejected by the city as inappropriate for this location due to land use restrictions, critical and sensitive areas, landslide hazard, and because of its proximity to our community of modest homes since 1943. And that any proposed modification of this preapplication will also be rejected for the same reasons. We do believe in green energy, but not if it threatens communities, families, the environment, wildlife, and our waterways. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Azure Alender.
Hello, my name is Azure Alender. And this is how much I care for this subject is that I'm up here speaking to you folks because I literally hate public speaking. I just really want to reiterate what I said at the council meeting over Zoom. I believe it was April 6. And all of the points I have no doubt Nikki, my neighbor, along Fifth already stated. But the one thing that startles me the most is in, within the pre-application document on page three, where I quit reading it. It simply states that there is no stream present on this land parcel. And that's complete and utter falsehood. And I just cannot believe that it even got to this point. Whereas it is not zoned for industry. It's simply put, the brakes should have been put on it right then and there. And the fact that it's continuing is beyond me. It's completely beyond me. And then to later on learn that all of the energy that would be created would be going up the hill over to Bellevue, which I just cannot believe any of you folks would want to put a destructive project such as this in such a critical area. I ended my five-minute speech over the Zoom, reiterating the tragedy of the Oso landslide. And just, this has been, of course, on my mind ever since I saw the drone. As soon as I saw the drone, if I had a gun, I would have shot it down, and I would have dealt with the hazards later. Because I knew something bad was going to happen. And you guys all have the opportunity right here to put an end to it. I just couldn't believe that our slogan is being ahead of the curve. We need to be ahead of the curve and put the brakes on this, not only within the city of Renton, but within the state. It's dangerous. I don't have the time to sit and look up all of the details and all of the fire hazards. And simply put, I don't need to. Once you, once you hear of one or two, what's going to stop? What is going to stop? And if we allow this to happen in a zoned area that industry is not allowed, we're opening a can of worms that cannot be put back. We cannot we cannot undo what is done. I mean, there's two documented streams. There's an aquifer or stone throw from the Cedar River that the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife do guided tours that we are so proud of within the city of Renton. If we allowed this to happen, we're, we don't need to have anybody put a smear campaign on any of you because you allowed it. And it's all against our, our complete slogan, being ahead of the curve. And on May 22, I know this date because I was planting my tomatoes in my back, and it's my daughter's 25th birthday. Sure enough, I heard the eerie sounds of cracking trees. And sure enough, right in the distance, I saw one of the, the trees fall and, and completely blocked the whole access road. And it's like, we want to propose this here, within this delicate ecosystem? Yes, I know, it's not pristine wildlife. But let me tell you, I mean, there's everything. There's everything that a habitat needs for survival. And being that close to the river, we, we can't take it back. You cannot take it back. And an ounce of prevention equals a pound of cure. I was taught that when I was very young, and I live by it today. And that's, thank you for your time. And I just would like to say, oh, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one more person signed up, Imesto. And I can't read the last name there.
It's Ernesto Podaca.
Podaca.
It's just like it sounds, P-O-D-A-C-A. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ernesto Podaca. And I live in the city of Renton. More specifically, I live in Maplewood Glen. So I have a little, little skin in this game. I too am concerned about this, this particular battery storage system being in my, almost in my backyard. You know, there, there was a reason why planning originally zoned this. It's 40 some odd years ago as RC. And one of those reasons is obviously landslide, geologic hazard issues. You know, I've, I've lived in this area for two years now. And I think twice already, we've had to close the Maple Valley Highway due to landslides. And since there is currently planned in that space, only, looks like only one means of egress, ingress and egress in and, in and on that site. You know, should a landslide happen and, and seal off that site? And then, you know, God forbid, a fire breaks out. There's no way that the fire department could effectively fight that fire. So it's so I, I would really urge planning to make a negative recommendation, not support this, and counsel to say no to this. I do want to thank council for, for putting a six-month moratorium on this. It's, it's important to understand the process that technology takes in development. It's a planned process and how that technology is implemented and how it's, and how it's placed on site is also a process that needs to be carefully considered. It is not haphazardly dumped on a site because it's flat or looks good or whatever. You know, this, this, a battery storage system could be sited close to the Talbot, the Talbot, the Talbot substation. There's a lot, not a lot of flat land. Granted, a lot of, a lot of transmission lines, which I know Puget Sound would, would prefer to have clear access to, but that's a design issue that, that could be designed around for those battery storage units. So I would, once again, urge city council and staff and planning to say no to this battery storage system at this particular location. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up to speak tonight on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We, we do have two others signed up to speak tonight.
Okay.
That first person is Paige Selden. Paige, go ahead.
Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. And thank you, council and mayor, for your time and attention. I also am a resident of the Maplewood Glen Division that and have a house that almost backs up onto the, onto the area. And, you know, honestly, it's really just too close to the homes. It's also, we have a gas pipeline in the neighborhood. And my concern is if there were to be a fire and you would, would Renton's fire department be equipped to handle an emergency on that scale? And what, what safety protocols would be put into place to prevent the fire from reaching the gas pipeline? And the neighborhood itself is prone to flooding. It's prone to slides, as people have said. And this is an unmanned station they're proposing. So that's, you know, other issues there. There would also be light and noise pollution for the residents in the area. 24/7. It would be constant. And if there were a fire, if there would be, you know, like so much water would be required to put out a fire of that magnitude, where would that water go? I mean, it would go into the river. It would come into our lands, and it would be tainted water. A possible impact would be our homeowner's insurance. Would we be able to be insured for normal fires? Or would be, would be excluded from that and have to pay, you know, for an extra policy on that? It could be very costly to the, to the people in this area. And quite frankly, we're not in a position to, you know, financially, all of us, to, to handle that increase. And so these are my concerns on this. But besides the wildlife that's back there, we have hours of videotape of deer, bobcats, coyotes. There's hawks. There's bald eagles and owls and all, all kinds of other, like, small little mammals and rodents that are back in that area. And it would affect the wildlife patterns. And we would, like someone else said, we would not be able to get that back if it, once it was destroyed. And I guess that those are my concerns, and I appreciate your time. And I'm really hoping that the council will see that this is not the place that, that really this, there, there has to be a better area. Even within Renton, there's probably other places. But this location is, is just not suitable. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Lori, Lori Goman. Lori, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, great. Hi. So a lot of my stuff is just going to be repeated things from my neighbors. I've been a Renton resident here in this particular neighborhood for 33 years. And it is a medium to low-income neighborhood. And I, you know, I am for green, but I'm not quite understanding how a battery energy supply system could be green in my backyard when I already have green back there with wildlife. Like everybody said, we have geers, blue herons that come back there. Right now, the rabbits are really in full bloom. We've got some raccoons that have been here since I've been here, raising their families. And we've got one mama at any time, ready to give birth again. Usually, they do it behind my garage, in my back shed. And, you know, I'm really concerned. We have a lot of houses, just recently, in the last couple of years, have sold in here to young couples with children. And, you know, to be fair, you know, these children should be able to live in a safe place. That's why they bought in here. It's a great neighborhood. Renton's a great city. And, you know, Renton's policy is we're ahead of the curve. Let's stay that way. Let's stay green. Renton does a great job taking care of all their parks and protecting their lands. And so I'm, I'm, was really opposed to even think that this application would be considered by the city of Renton. They are all about taking, keeping that river clean. I mean, with, there's the aquifers on, on the, this property that we're talking about. And it just really, really concerns me. I raise my children here. My grandchildren are at my house all the time. And I, I just don't understand where this could even be looked upon, at this location. You know, it, it needs a bigger space. And it is, for one, not zoned for this type of thing. So that's why, how can this even be considered? Another point that somebody had was, was very true. We already Another point that somebody had was, was very true. We already are in a hundred year flood plain because of where the river turns in comes, would come through this neighborhood if anything ever happened. We did get evacuated one year because the river did back up. You know, and we have to pay extra for our homeowner's insurance because of that reason. So good point on the insurance, you know, about the fires and stuff. And the pipeline is a concern. It's very well maintained and we haven't had any issues. Let's thank God to that. But let's, let's keep our community clean and safe. I could go on and on, but everything has been said and I really, really hope that you guys take into consideration a different location, steer them in a different location where it's not close to a community, you know, it, you know, immediate residence. You know, there's, it's not commercial property. So I'm is baffled by that. Anyways, I appreciate your time and thank you so much for hearing me. I do appreciate, you know, the Renton Council. Very proud of them. So, um, thank you so much for listening to us. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
That was the last person I have that was registered to speak. Uh, is there anyone in the Zoom call that would like to address council regarding tonight's public hearing? If so, please raise your hand. And I, it does look like I see one hand raised, Mr. Mayor. That is Jack McCullough. Jack, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jack McCullough, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. And I'm not here to talk about a specific piece of property. Um, I work a lot with clean energy companies, including those involved in solar and wind energy. And I just wanted to make the point as the city is studying this, uh, new technology that it is not going to be possible to move into a new era of clean techno, uh, clean energy without having significant battery storage capability somewhere in our communities. I, I take my hat off to the city of Renton. It was, uh, back in twenty-ten that the city adopted its clean economy strategy, CES. And, and I know that, um, that the city has been working on CES two point zero, in part to respond to the Washington State Clean Energy Trans, uh, Transformation Act, CETA, that is applicable to all the counties and cities in the state. And it's really calling on all of, uh, us as jurisdictions to make preparations for moving away from fossil fuels. Obviously, the fossil fuel, um, energy sources on which we mostly rely have the great, um, the benefit, the capacity of being, uh, say instant on, they're always there, right? Uh, unlike a lot of our clean energy sources like solar uh, and wind, which are only available at certain times of day or when certain weather conditions prevail. Um, and so in order to make those clean energy options feasible, there needs to be a way to store the energy, the solar energy that's created during the day, the wind energy that is created during wind events to store it for times during the daily cycle when, uh, otherwise that clean energy is not being created. And without this storage facility kind of throughout the state, throughout the nation, it is not going to be possible to move to, uh, to a clean energy future. So, um, I just wanted to encourage the council to continue your path that you've been on, which is I think, uh, to proceed with a lot of foresight in this area, uh, to take the time as you will with the planning commission and your staff this summer to study this carefully. Uh, but it's, it's a really critical new step in order to make sure that we can, uh, move away from our dependency on fossil fuels. And I would note that because the state has become involved in this through CETA, that, uh, it will be incumbent on local communities really to make accommodation for these kind of facilities in order to allow for clean energy to be used. And, and that is preferable to happen at the local level rather than having the state move in through the energy facility citing commission process or other kind of, you know, uh, same perhaps more heavy-handed state measures, um, to ensure that battery storage can be provided. So I'm happy to, uh, stay in touch with staff and, and be a resource as we move forward and look forward to your thoughtful and careful consideration of, uh, where and how in the city uh, and elsewhere in the region, these facilities ought to be located in order to, um, in order to preserve and protect our clean energy future. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next person we have is Nancy Quinn. Nancy, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you all so much for what you do. I'm, I'm disappointed in myself that I didn't get signed up to speak before, but, uh, I have a busy life and have just embraced a new foster child in my home. And I'm actually exceedingly grateful that that happened tonight because, um, I get to speak after the gentleman that just spoke, who doesn't seem to realize that that the current site that's projected is fifty feet from our fence line. It is not safe and it is certainly not clean energy. If you look into battery, these battery storage sites, what it takes to mine lithium ion batteries makes them unsafe. They are not clean. They, just to mine one ounce of lithium, I, of lithium creates so much dirty water, it's unbelievable. So I don't think that we need to be talking about what we think is clean now that is going to prove in twenty years to be supremely hazardous. So, um, as you guys know, I've been an opponent of this. I am for keeping our green belt. I am for protecting our neighborhood. I am for protecting our families. Liberty Ridge will be consumed with toxic fumes. When this, and not, I'm not saying if, I'm saying when this goes badly. We all know about the thermal runaway. We all know how toxic the gases and the runoff from this is. This cannot be allowed to continue. And I know I was frustrated at the beginning of the meeting because you guys have said you're going to put a moratorium on this. We also know from the, the verbiage that you have the, the liberty to take that away. But the consequences for when this goes wrong is so in your hands and on your backs when it goes wrong, that I know, I know in my heart that this isn't going to happen. So I'm not really concerned about that. I'm just super passionate about the future of our children in this neighborhood and the safety of our neighbors. And how, what a bad idea this is. I'm, I'm confident that you're going to make the right decisions. So again, thank you all so much for what you do and, uh, Godspeed. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Lizette Gillette. Lizette, go ahead.
Good afternoon. This is her husband, Michael Gillette, and I am sitting with Lizette Gillette as well. And I, I just want to thank the city council for continuing to allow the city residents to speak their, uh, have their voices heard. I know there are several the neighborhoods up the hill that, uh, would be concerned and are unable to make these meetings as well as several neighbors in the Maplewood Glen, which is adjacent to this community, adjacent to the specifics, uh, site that are also equally concerned and are unable to make this, uh, meeting as well. So we represent a small portion of, uh, of larger, uh, amount of residents, Renton residents are very concerned about this. And I would, uh, definitely agree with a lot of what has been said already. And this find it very inappropriate that it has gone this far. I do think that, uh, the battery, as much as Renton should be on the forefront and clean energy should be considered. This is not a forefront issue. This is not a clean energy item. It's, should quickly be dismissed. A moratorium is not sufficient enough to have to discuss this item every six months or every three months. There's clearly environmental hazards to the wildlife in that space. There's, uh, environmental hazards to the community and residents, uh, adjacent and above. There's environmental hazards to the river that is adjacent and goes into Lake Washington as well, as well as the flooding zones, the landslides, potential fires, trees falling. I mean, there, the environmental hazards is risk is way too high to consider any of this to be appropriate. And even if the zone and not just for the best system, but changing the zone period, to go from, and the, the current zone to a scale that goes all the way to industrial typically, you know, these tip, and I understand there's general exceptions, but there are typically city and regional development says zoning are, zoning is strategic. They go in certain areas and residents aren't typically zoned next to industrial areas. So even if you change the zone, that's also not appropriate. So not only is this industrial battery storage not appropriate, changing, even discussing and considering changing the zone from one scale all the way to the other side of the scale to industrial is inappropriate. This really should be quickly voted no. A moratorium is also not needed to be continued. Like I, I'm very thankful that more toward was done. We continue to discuss this. We continue to do research. But at some point, this, we need to realize this is not enough. It, this just needs to be dismissed. Please vote no on this. Please dismiss this. Please, uh, continue with a process that does not require us to talk about this every six months. Thank you for your time. I, I just want to also thank the neighbors and previous people that spoke as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all I have.
Okay. And I don't see anyone else in the audience looking to to address the council. So, um, I'm just going to say a few words to the, the individuals that testified tonight. First, I want to say thank you for, um, for taking your evening away from your family and friends to come down here and, and, um, have this discussion with the council. This is something the council and the administration takes extremely seriously, protecting our residents. You know, it feels like it's gone far, too far, I think, is, was one of the statements. And it really is a process. And as far as putting the brakes on it, that's exactly what the council did so that we could take a closer look at this and, and, um, find out exactly what this use is and, um, and make decisions going from there. So, um, thank you all very much for, for coming down and, and, um, letting the council know how you feel tonight. So what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, we have, do we have correspondence?
I do have some correspondence. Yes, sir.
Yes.
I, I received two pieces of correspondence. One was from Ms. Nicola, uh, Robinson, who spoke earlier. And the other is from a Mr. Tommy Nelson on behalf of Tanaska, who I believe is the applicant for the proposed BSS project. Uh, to summarize their email, they indicate that the project will create jobs and revenue in Renton, increase the security and resiliency of the electrical grid and will position Renton as a leader in a carbon-free future. They also indicated that this project supports the clean economy strategy and are willing to provide any additional information about the, uh, system if requested. And I, I want to point out that both items, the correspondence have been added to the record for the public hearing and have been forwarded to council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Halloran, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All right, it's public hearing is closed. Thank you. And next up, we have administrative report.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. National Secure Your Load Day is today, June sixth. This day honors people whose lives are impacted or taken by unsecured vehicle loads and road debris and encourages all drivers to properly secure their loads every time they drive. Throughout the month of June, the Renton Police Department Traffic Unit, as well as our patrol officers, will be doing extra emphasis on the roads to make sure all loads are secured properly. Renton Farmers Market returns to Piazza Park, corner of South Third Street and Logan Avenue South, when it opened. When it opens, it's twenty-first market season on Tuesday, tomorrow, June seventh. Vendors will have fresh flowers, fresh produce, honey, baked goods, ciders, wine and cheese, crafts and delicious ready to eat food. Snap and EBT shoppers can use the Snap Market Match Incentive Program, which offers a dollar for dollar match of up to forty dollars per day to be used for fresh produce. In addition, the Kids Patch Activity Area returns and there will be live music from four thirty to six thirty PM. Part for free in the nearby city center parking garage, six fifty-five South Second Street. Market is open every Tuesday from three to seven PM through September twenty-seventh. Find more information on Renton Farmers Market on their website, Instagram or Facebook. Join your neighbors and police officers for coffee and conversation at Coffee with the Cop on June eighth at the Rose Gift House and Coffee, two twenty-six Main Avenue South from ten AM to noon. Representatives from the Renton Police Department will be available to answer your questions about crime prevention, traffic enforcement, investigations, recruitment or community programs and services that are available to the Renton community. Solid Waste Utilities' second event in their series of three mini recycle events will be on Saturday, June eleventh, from ten AM to two PM at Renton Technical College North Parking Lot, Northeast Sixth Place and Monroe Avenue Northeast. Bring mattresses, cardboard and vehicle tire, excuse me, vehicle tires for recycling. The first event on May seventh served approximately three hundred and fifteen participants and prevented over ten tons of scrap metal and seven hundred and ninety pounds of styrofoam from going to landfill disposal. In addition, eighty-seven pounds of food were donated by recycle event participants to the Salvation Army Food Bank. The Sunset Community Church located at ten thirty-two Edmunds Avenue Northeast is hosting a free community pancake breakfast on Saturday, June eleventh, from eight AM to ten AM. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is your report.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have audience comment. We have one person signed up here in person. Then we have a few signed up online. When your name is called, um, please come up to the podium and you have five minutes to speak. Please give your name, uh, city of residence and the topic you'll be discussing. And first up, in person, we have Claudia Donnelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Claudia Donnelly and I live east of Renton in King County. I want to talk about stormwater runoff because I know you're talking about that later. But this is another issue about stormwater runoff. There is a state law that says upstream property cannot be adversely affected by downs, cannot adversely affect downstream property. We get stormwater runoff from Renton Homes, Roads and Developments, King County Roads and Homes and SR nine hundred. I am providing everyone, everyone with some documents I have accumulated over the years, including one I got from a Bellevue Land Use Attorney. It's about case, uh, stormwater runoff. And I'm giving a, a special document. I got a copy to the mayor. In two thousand and eight, the city annexed the McKay property near Stone Gate. This is what was written. Quote, "The proposed annex, annexation is located within the Maek Creek Drainage Basin, which has been identified as having significant erosion, water quality and habitat problems due to urbanization." And I've lived in that area for thirty-five years. So far, I've seen nothing done by Renton or others to fix the problem. In two thousand and nine, a developer from Martin Ranch Development above Windstone contacted a King County Water and Land Resource Engineer, Brian Slate, instead of doing a real drainage analysis. The city accepted his recommendations. And in two thousand and nine, this is what he said. Twelve, quote, twelve twenty-nine oh nine. Ms. Donnelly is on NDA Neighborhood Drainage Assistance Program list. The program is currently not funded. Ms. Donnelly is currently near the top of the list and has a good chance to be funded if the program is funded. BS, unquote. This is nothing but a big lie. I live downstream from I live downstream from this development and I'm sure I complained about what the additional water would do to my property. But Renton planners don't care about protecting other people's property, especially someone who doesn't live within city limits. And King County doesn't care about lying employees either. In nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, both King County and Renton, one of the Windstone Development to go to and go in above me. My husband and I appealed the DNS for this development, but we're overruled by quote people who knew better, or so they claimed. We get stormwater runoff from the from the detention pond involved. In twenty eighteen, the city of Renton, King County and Newcastle were concerned about a proposed clear cut on the Delia Wall area of Cougar Mountain. Former Mayor Dennis Law wrote a letter to DNR. This is what some of what he said. The city of Renton, quote, the city of Renton is very concerned about delirious impacts this proposal could have on the downstream environment. And the fragile May Creek Basin unquote. My husband and I experienced the same type of clear cut in nineteen eighty-nine. For the Windstone Development, we get stormwater runoff from the Windstone Detention Pond and Vault and other detention ponds in the area. I have a note from the Windstone HOA president who told me this, quote. Regarding your questions, yes, it is my understanding based on city diagrams. That the water from the retention ponds involved that collect storm drain water from the subdivision. Do ultimately dump water into Green Stream. And Green Stream is the stream that flows through my yard down to May Creek. I gave the Newcastle City Manager some of my pictures and and the city attorney took him to a King County judge. And got a temporary injunction against the Delia Wall Clearcut. I gave the same pictures to Renton officials for the Wolf Woods Wolf Woods Annexation along with the BRB. I attended a BRB meeting in February twenty twenty and heard board members say they were appalled by what both King County and Renton allowed to happen. The members wondered why Renton and King County officials couldn't work together to fix the problem. I don't have an answer. Renton, we'll see, in twenty nineteen, Renton annexed Wolf Woods. This is what was said about the stormwater runoff problems, quote. Stormwater management will be provided directly or via contract in a manner that is consistent. With the city of Renton Stormwater Manual, King County Standards and the applicable State of Washington Guidelines. As described in section three, the city is aware of some previously reported stormwater management challenges in the nearby areas. While annexation per se will not impact current matters, city officials report. An intention to develop a plan to better address these issues following annexation of a Wolf Woods area. Annexation occurred in twenty nineteen and today is twenty twenty-two, so what is the plan? There is nothing in this document that says development has to start before Renton does anything. Uh, okay, in twenty twenty, I wrote a letter to the Department of Ecology. To stop the Delpay Short Plaid at SR nine hundred and one forty-eighth Avenue Southeast because of an incomplete drainage analysis. On this site, there are moderate slopes ranging from eight to fifteen percent down to May Creek. We live towards the bottom of the East Renton Plateau. No one from the firm did that did the downstream analysis talked to us about what we have experienced. That is why I wrote to DOE about stopping this short plaid and DOE agreed with me. I need help, I need help from everybody, not just me. King County has told me that one, we can fix the problem, well, how do you fix a God problem? I mean, with all the rain we've had, I'm supposed to fix that with my money? Or two, I can go to risk management, or three, I can hire a consultant. Why do I have to do that? I didn't cause it. You guys caused it indirectly by sending that water down through my yard to May Creek. And before I go, I have some pictures I gave Melissa.
I believe she passed them out to us.
Yeah, I I just want to uh explain what some of them are, if that's okay.
Um, actually, you're, we're kind of out of time at this point, what's the wish of the council here?
I've only got about five pictures.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move we give Ms. Donnelly two more minutes.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Rivera, that we give Ms. Donnelly two more minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay.
Right here.
I know, but I want.
Oh, one second, yep. All right, we got new stuff in here, so one second.
This is a.
I'm working on it. All right.
Okay, this, this is. This is the detention pond and what it looks like at Windstone, which is above us. The big one is the detention pond, the little one is the vault. And it sends water like we've had the last couple of days through my yard to May Creek, full of sediment, rocks, whatever. This is the, these are pictures that I took in nineteen ninety, ninety-seven. This is my yard, the start of the flooding. Next one is Lake Donnelly, it's a new lake, uh has has gone away now, but it comes back every time we have a Hawaiian Express. The last one again is is Lake Donnelly. This is the northwest corner of my property, I have about a half acre. And you can see the brown water, we got that for seven years. How would you like to have some property? And every year you can't use it for seven years because flooded like that. Okay, the next one. Again, Lake Donnelly, this is what a King County judge approved the injunction for on. This is. A sediment bar had the width of our feet, our property. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, our neighbor changed the stream course, so we had a little waterfall now, we had a different problem. So we had an engineer from Willard come out and say, put big rocks down here to stress to stop the force, we did. Now you can't see the rocks because the sediment's covered them up. This is my yard after it dried out. Notice the leaves on the fence, my husband's an engineer and determined that the water in that spot was eighteen inches deep. And the next one is is a neighbor's property. Then, this is what I did, in my neighborhood across from Esther Park, county has some uh parkland, we we like to frequent. In the wet, in the park, there's a wetland and there's a little bitty stream of water coming down, goes down to SR nine hundred. That's stormwater runoff that we get. I talked to the county about it and they say, what's what's stormwater runoff, you don't, we don't see any. Down at the bottom in December of this this past year. Water coming from SR nine hundred, maybe a little gully. You can see the outline of it. So I got a picture of that, I got one.
We need to wrap it up, okay?
One more picture, this is the last one. This was taken the next day, you notice water coming off SR nine hundred, that's stormwater runoff that I get. That May Creek gets, that Lake Washington gets, something needs to be done and not by us.
Thank you. Okay, we have um a couple of people signed up virtually to speak to the council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh the first person we have signed up is Cody Palmer, however, I don't see Cody in attendance tonight.
Okay.
The next person is Comren Ahmad. Comren, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and and council for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I moved to the East Renton Highlands last July from Bellevue and would just like to state that. Really enjoying the community and all that Renton has to offer, to your points about inclusion. And being an extremely welcoming place, I love that folks here look out for each other and are so kind. I'm speaking tonight uh to raise some concern over southeast one hundred and twenty-eighth Street. Um, this street is known for a few things. Um, some folks refer to this as Cemetery Road. Um, this road is also used by folks, um frankly for racing. In fact, if you drive sort of beyond um the intersection there on um one hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue Southeast. You can actually see tire tracks from folks burning out and doing cookies and donuts and racing. Um, it's not uncommon for people to drive on this road at speeds that I would approximate to be in excess of sixty miles per hour. Um, I myself live on one hundred and seventy-seventh Place Southeast. Um, and as you can see, if you were to look at a map of of some of these sort of arterial communities that that feed off of one hundred and twenty-eighth. Um, you'll notice that there's really no sidewalk or curb space to speak of, and so what this means is if I walk um towards one hundred and twenty-eighth Street. Um, and I hang a left, I essentially am walking alongside vehicles, um traveling sixty to seventy miles per hour. Um, there is no curb or sidewalk to speak of. In the past month or two, we've had three accidents and one fatality on this road. Um, I have seen some of the seniors in the community who like to go out and go for walks. Um, being forced to navigate four lanes of traffic to cross this road at one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue Southeast. One hundred and seventy-second Avenue Southeast and um, you know, possibly a little bit better because of the light up Patriot Way. But overall, huge issue. Um, so I raise this because I'm concerned that, quite honestly, it's a matter of time before someone will be hit by a vehicle. Um, I'm very open-minded and would seek the council's support to sort of ideate on an appropriate solution. Um, I don't know that the correct answer is to take police resources and have them radar folks on this road who are driving fast. Um, I don't know if that's feasible or not, I think one thing that came to mind for me would be lowering the speed on this road substantially. Installing additional traffic cameras and working to provide community members with some sort of barrier or curb or sidewalk. Um, what is in existence today, I I didn't bring any uh photos, I'm on I'm on Zoom obviously, but if you take a look at what's there. Um, there's not a lot separating pedestrians from vehicles traveling at extremely high speeds, it is a sketchy road. And I think the problem extends quite far along one hundred and twenty-eighth Street. Um, so really, I'd love the the council's input on what might be feasible here. Um, I I want to improve the walkability of this community, which is wonderful. Um, like I said, I'm I'm very grateful to live here and appreciate the the time to speak tonight, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, we will uh we'll pass this information on to the Public Works and Police Department, we have a number of of different ways of uh traffic calming. And uh we'll definitely look into seeing if we can't utilize some of those to slow the traffic down in that area. So next up.
Mr. Mayor, the last two people I have registered to speak are Diane Dobson and Sherry Brunette, however, I don't see either of them signed on tonight. And that is all I have.
That's everybody, okay. All right, well, next we're on to the consent agenda, there are ten items, are there any items that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
Yes, uh, hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the consent agenda be approved as published, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay. Okay, motion carries, next up we are on to unfinished business, Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole has one report to present.
Okay, this uh Committee of the Whole Committee Report is regarding renaming of the Renton Senior Activity Center. Uh, the Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and more move forward. With the city facility renaming process for the Renton Senior Activity Center to honor Dawn Person as established in policy six hundred oh four.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman McGurven.
I move the council concur with the committee of the whole report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee of the whole report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right, motion carries, Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberton.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one one committee report to present.
Hey, Utilities Committee Committee Report, this is an agreement amendment with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the Cedar River two oh five project levy certification. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number Six to Contract fifteen two twenty-four with Tetra Tech Incorporated. In the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for phase three of the Cedar River two oh five project levy certification. Uh, this is signed by the committee chair, vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberton.
I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alerson, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries, Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're on to legislation, we have four ordinances tonight, two for second reading and two for first.
Right, the first ordinance for a second and final reading is regarding the Public Works Department Reorganization. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington amending chapter three dash seven of the Renton Municipal Code to update. Public Works Department divisions pursuant to reorganizations, authoring authorizing corrections, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the ordinance be adopted as read, this is the second reading, requires roll call.
Hey, Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberton.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is also first, second and final reading is regarding the salary table adjustment pursuant to the reorganization. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington adopting an amended twenty twenty-two city of Renton salary table. To implement and authorize reorganization of the Public Works Department and reinserting an existing position that was previously inadvertently omitted from the salary table. And establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read, second reading requires roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberton.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding code interpretations, uh, this is a docket item number two oh five. Uh, this is for first reading only. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington amending chapter four one of the Renton Municipal Code. Subsections four two one fifteen F two four four zero five five A four six zero six zero J one and four seven zero six zero B. Of the Renton Municipal Code, definitions in sections four eleven ten, four eleven forty and four eleven one forty of the Renton Municipal Code and section nine two four. Of the Renton Municipal Code codifying administrative code interpretations from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. Authorizing corrections, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince. I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next item. All right, the next item is another salary table adjustment. This is regarding the police contract that was approved during consent agenda. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2022 City of Renton Salary Table to reflect collectively bargained changes and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to new business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce first that the Committee of the Whole will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference on Monday, June, what is it, 13th? At 6:00 PM, yeah, two items on the agenda. Allocation of the lodging tax funding for 2022, and second, a Rent Municipal Arts Commission update. And then we'll have a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. And finally, I just want to say I'm so sorry I could not be with you all there in person tonight. I'm excited to see that this hybrid thing is working so far, and hopefully next week I'll be able to join y'all back in person. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 13th at 5:00 PM, in the council conference room and by video conference, the Plan Development Committee will meet. We have five items on the agenda. One, continued pooling of Senate, Senate Bill 1406 Sales Tax Credit Fund with South King County Housing and Homeless Partners. Two, retail pet sales. Three, docket 16 Group A update. Four, stormwater pollution source control program. Title four code amendments briefing, and five emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 13, 2022, at 3:00 PM, the Public Safety Committee will meet in the council conference room and also via video conference. There are four items on the agenda. Edward Byrne Bernie Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program for year 2021 local solicitation. Aggressing gun violence, RFA briefing, and emerging issues in public safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Councilmember Alberston.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an item of new business. I would like to refer the topic of providing an all-gendered restroom or all-gender restrooms at the Renton Community Center to administration to then be referred to the Community Services Committee.
Second.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yes, I motion. Yes, sir, I do motion the affirmation.
I believe Ryan seconded it.
Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember, with Council President McGurven, that the, the issue of all-gender bathroom in Renton Community Center be sent to the administration to report back to the Community Services Department in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And any new business? No new business?
No new business under that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two items of new business. The first is that on Monday, June 13th at 4:15 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference and also in the council conferencing room. We have four items on the agenda. ESD reorganization, IT administration, administrative support, the Philip Arnold Park Playground Equipment Replacement, grant contract for Kulan North Park Walk Legislative Appropriation, and emerging issues in finance. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that I had the pleasure on Saturday to attend the North American Institute for Mexican Advancement Program in Tacoma. The event, the event was sponsored in part by the Jalisco/Washington Sister State Commission, and the Coatla Renton Sister Cities also got a shout out. The program Saturday evening featured a world-class, all-women mariachi band and dance performances, and I know that the city is pleased to host the president of Coatla and the Mexican consulate in Seattle here during their visit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we're almost through our first meeting back in chambers. And before we go, I want to give a shout out here to our city clerk, Jason Sath, who oversaw the upgrade of our AV system here in this, in the council chambers here. It was a huge, heavy lift, and I think the technology that we're all working with now is, is going to bring a better product to our residents and hopefully last us for years. So thank you very much. Okay, what's the wish of the council? Who's we adjourn?
Second.
Second. It's been moved by Council, Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Rivera, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.